Good evening and welcome to tonight's Saginaw Council meeting. We begin the meeting with prayer and a pledge. Please join me. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to serve the citizens of Saginaw. We are so blessed to have the city and our staff. We ask that you be with the council members as we deliberate. And just a special thanks to our firefighters and especially our special firefighter that had a heart attack after responding to a fire. We just thank you for the recovery and we just thank you that everything went smooth. Please be with all our city workers, especially those that are working in this frigid temperature out there. Keep them safe. We ask this in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance.
For the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Councilman Tibbs.
Present.
Councilwoman Bench.
Present.
Mayor Protem O'Neal.
Present.
Councilman Caloris.
Present.
Councilwoman Moore.
Present.
Councilwoman Balls.
Present.
Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have nine members present and zero absent this evening.
Thank you. Remind the audience to remain quiet and refrain from speaking during the council meeting. This is also an excellent time to check your cell phone, to make sure your cell phone is put on vibrate or stun. No, we don't say that no more, do we? I'm sorry. I apologize. How about just vibrate would be good. Turn it off. So, please do that. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, I do have some this evening. As of January 1st, 2015, curbside recycling has been upgraded to include more materials and it eliminates the sorting requirements. For complete details, please visit the city's website at saginaw-mi.com. And City Hall will be closed Monday, January 19th for the Martin Luther King Holiday. And the next regular city council meeting and strategic planning session will be held on Saturday, January 24th at the Castle Museum at 9:00 a.m. And the city will conduct a public safety career fair on Thursday, January 29th at 12:00 noon until 3:00 p.m. here in council chambers. And Mayor, we have a proclamation this evening for the Saginaw High School marching band.
Well, thank you. And tonight, Councilman Balls is asked to be able to read that proclamation. So, at this time, could we have the members of the Saginaw High marching band, please stand up in front here by the podium for me. Also, the band director too, would you come up and just kind of right up right across that front row? Would you just stand right up by the chairs across the front rows on both sides? Maybe we got some on the other side of the podium. There you go. And I do love those smiley faces. You are on camera, so. Right up there, so.
On television.
All right. Congratulations.
I have a proclamation. Whereas in 1993, the Saginaw High Mighty Marching Trojan Band had a mere 13 members. Under the direction of band director Jeannie Coughlin, better known as Ms. J.C., the Mighty Marching Trojan Band now has over 100 members and is known nationally as well as internationally for their distinguished skills and ability. And whereas their Mighty Marching Trojan Band is a shining star for Saginaw High School and proudly represents the Saginaw High School community in several local events as the 100 Days of Non-Vibes Parade, the Saginaw Christmas Pride Parade, the Seco de Mayo Parade, and the Memorial Day Parade. And whereas the Mighty Marching Trojans have won several awards and prestigious honors in recent years, the band was selected in 2006 to provide opening entertainment at the Ryder Cup and received congressional recognition in Washington, D.C. in 2001. The Mighty Marching Trojans have traveled to Atlanta, Georgia, Hampton, Virginia, Knoxville, Tennessee for prominent competitions, earning top-level ratings and recognition. And whereas the Saginaw High School Mighty Marching Trojan Band was recently invited to travel to Jacksonville, Florida to perform on it January 2nd at the Tax Slayer Gator Bowl, while in Florida, the Marching Trojans competed in the field show competition and received second and third place in national honors. And whereas the Saginaw community is proud of the reputation that the Marching Trojans have earned nationally and the fine publicity they have brought to our community, now therefore be resolved, I Dennis Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow councilmen and our citizens, do hereby extend this expression of pride and offer congratulations to the Saginaw High School Mighty Marching Trojan Band on receiving second and third place in the Tax Slayer Gator Bowl Field Show Competition. We commend the Mighty Trojans for their outstanding achievements and for being a stellar example of the use in our community, confirming what hard work and dedication can accomplish. It is witness, therefore, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed on this 12th day of January in the year of our Lord, 2015. This is signed by Dennis Browning, the mayor, councilpersons Amos O'Neal, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Larry Caloris, Dennis Fitzpatrick, Floyd Clark, Brenda F. Moore, and Desmond L. Tibbs, and Timothy Morales, the city manager. Congratulations.
On behalf of my students here, these are my section leaders. I didn't want to bring the whole band in because there's actually 132 of us. So, I chose to bring my drum major, Mr. Timo Perkins, and my section leaders here to be with me tonight. But I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of our appreciation, of the support that we get from the city of Saginaw and obviously our Saginaw High School community. Because of course, without your support and the support of everybody around us, we wouldn't be able to do the many things that we are able to do. So, on behalf of myself and my students, I say thank you to you. Thanks.
Mayor, your next item of business is a public hearing, and we have one this evening. It is a hearing to create an Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act district at 124 South Michigan Avenue.
And just to remind you, the purpose of the public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments for consideration at the time action may be taken. Public comments shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the hearing. Begin by stating your name. The applicant or main presenter or representative will be allowed 15 minutes. Other speakers will be limited to five. Speakers may ask general questions but shall not ask questions of specific council members. So, with the public hearing open, do I have anyone to speak on the obsolete public hearing? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Browning. Let these folks leave. Good evening, Mayor Browning, Mayor Protem O'Neal, council members, and manager Morales. I'm Tom Miller with Saginaw Future, and I'm here to speak tonight about the request for the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act certificate. You'll be familiar with this project as you recently approved the distillery license for the business at one of your recent council meetings. Just so everyone is familiar, the property we are discussing is the old Arden Whitney Flower Shop on Michigan, just south of Court Street. Mrs. Whitney retired, some of you know, and the building was put up for sale. Mr. Felton purchased the property and intends to distill specialty small-batch liquor at the location. The project complements nicely with the Oracle Brewing Company's recent project, which will be opening soon, just a couple blocks north on Michigan. One of the items we will discuss at the strategic planning session later on this month will be placemaking. It's the idea that job seekers and employers are choosing where to locate their business and where to live based more on quality-of-life issues than traditional site-location variables. Thriving metropolitan areas are ones that offer a variety of entertainment, recreation, and cultural amenities to the residents. This doesn't exclude or preclude small cities from participating in that kind of activity. Certainly Grand Rapids and Detroit have, we all travel to those areas for shows or for different cultural amenities. But there are small places like Traverse City where people drive hours. And not only for the beaches and the sun, but drive in the fall and the wintertime for their micro brew pubs, their wineries, their art festivals, and their cultural amenities. This project falls perfectly in line with that strategy. It's yet another project in the riverfront area that will add to the momentum which has created our new renaissance in the city of Saginaw. And we would like to thank you in advance for your consideration and your continued support of the economic development activities in the city of Saginaw. And we have Art Felton, who is here to represent the company and answer some questions about the project.
Hello?
Could you start off by saying your name for us, please?
Art Felton? Well, we had, I purchased the building in Old Town because I'm a lifelong resident of Saginaw. There's no better place as far as in this region of where we would want to be. There's restaurants down there. There are other, I guess, places for people to stop in, restaurants, bars, that sort of thing. This is a project that hopefully will have a lot of value to the downtown. We expect, or I expect, that we're going to spend upwards of, you know, $200,000 plus to renovate the facility. If you had been in there lately, I know the assessors have gone through and it had been a few years since it had some repair. So, the first goal was to save the building. The original building was 1852, and for me, that's important, to save it. There were two other additions that were put on in the 20s and then again in the 60s. And there's some severe roof problems as well as some floor issues in the facility as well. So, all of those things have to be fixed. I think I gave everyone a floor plan, or you may all have one. Basically, if you've, I know Tom had mentioned Traverse City. We have a, in my real job, I have a title insurance office up in Traverse City, and I get up there quite a bit. And it's very similar to our Old Town. We just need to have more and more development in there, simply because it is a destination. There's fantastic restaurants, bars, shopping centers, that sort of thing, all in that downtown area. This is basically similar to a tasting room, and that's what this project is. It's not a bar that's open until 2:00 or 1:00 at night. We are going to locally source corn, wheat, grains, malt, and basically, we're going to create a mash or a wort. We're going to cook it all up. We're going to ferment it, and then we're going to distill it. And we're going to start out making corn whiskey, which some people will call it moonshine. But basically, what that is, is it's whiskey that hasn't aged in a barrel, so it's fresh off the tap. Throughout the process, we'll age some spirits in oak barrels, that sort of thing. We'll also hopefully be making vodkas, that sort of thing, just as a, all locally sourced, though. We've already reached out to some farmers, and we have some things in place for corn already. I was previously approved at a different building here in town over off of West Tennessee. But when, the way this process works is you can't practice this in your garage or out in your backyard. The federal government doesn't like that. So, you have to have a federal license through TTB, which I do have. And then you also have to go through the state licensing process, and both of those take place at their own pace. So, in the seven or eight months it took to get the approval, this building became available. And it's a fantastic location for this, and that's really where we wanted to be in the first place. So, now, the process for me is that I have to go back through TTB, which I've done. The state, they've already received all my information. And once that's done, we can hopefully start getting our permits and stuff like that to start putting the building back together. So, but as a small distiller, it's less than 60,000 gallons of product a year, which is much different than some of the major distilleries like a Jack Daniels or something like that. So, it's on a much, much smaller craft level, so.
Members, any question? Any comment? Mr. Felton, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Councilman Daniel Fitzpatrick, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for a vote of confidence for Saginaw and for being a lifelong resident, as you So, you're going to, you're going to make it there, and then it will also be a tasting room. People can buy it there, or they have to go elsewhere?
No, they'll be able to come in. You see the little lounge areas where people can come in. There'll be a bar where they can come up to the bar, and they can sample the different products that we make. Then they'll also be able to purchase it and take it home with them. As we get along in this process and as it expands, there are three wholesalers in the state of Michigan. So, in order for me to then sell to Krogers or to sell to Meyer or any liquor store or bar, we then have to go through the process of getting a distributorship with one of the three companies. And in order to do that, you've got to create volume or enough product for them to distribute it. So, that would be down the road. That's like a six months, eight months out to have enough product to do that. So, yes, you'll be able to come in and sample it, hang out, watch some games on TV, that sort of thing, and then take some home.
So, the, now, you have a license to manufacture or to distill, but then you also have to have a liquor license right to sell.
It's all the same license. That's all within the same license as a small distiller. You're allowed to have the tasting rooms. There are different boxes that you can check regarding Sunday sales, or it's all part of the same process with the state.
So, is the cutoff, you mentioned 60,000 gallons.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the cutoff point of?
To be a small distiller, there's varying fee levels within the state, and that's kind of what their cutoff is. In regards to like a liquor license, I could not sell anything that I don't make. So, that's the other part of that with the small distillers licenses. Any product that we make, we can sell in our facility, but we can't sell Budweiser, Coors, or any other type of craft beer. We couldn't sell that in there. So, it's everything that we make.
I see. And you're not going to make beer?
No, there's no plan on that. There's no intention to do that now. No. Hopefully, the guys down the road have that covered.
Right.
I'm waiting for that to open, too. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Tibbs, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, and by all means, please pass the word up there at Traverse City to come on down.
Well, for sure. I do just want to say, too, through purchasing the building and through this process so far, I know you guys get a lot of heat sometimes, but, you know, the building people, the zoning people have been really responsive, and so has the assessing areas. Just the people that we've had to deal with in order to, I guess, try to piece this together to make sure that we can do it, that sort of thing, and everybody's been extremely helpful. So, I just wanted to make sure that you hear that side, too. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else want to speak on the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act at 124 South Michigan? And the third and final time, anyone else to speak at the, Tom, you just lost my train of thought there. That's okay. Is there anyone else to speak on the absolute property? Obsolete. Okay. Thank you. Being none, I entertain a motion to close the hearing?
No.
It's been moved and supported to close the hearing. Is there any other comments? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the hearing is closed.
Mayor, your next item of business are personal appearances.
And for personal appearances, just remind our speaker that we are limited to three minutes. So, with that, Madam Clerk, would you announce our first?
First and only speaker this evening is Michael Noel.
Thank you, city council. Thank you to Mayor for letting me speak. Last week, the last city council meeting, I was watching it at home, and you had a gentleman up here, and he was making some broad generalizations about the people that have been on the police force and being convicted of crimes and things and everything. I know Saginaw is going through a lot of challenges, but this is a quality-of-life issue, and I like to address it like that, that whoever you hire on the police force, that I assume police officers swear underneath the oath that they represent the whole city of Saginaw, not just the people who live on one side of the river or the other side of the river. So, I'd like to address that gentleman also. Why you use this pulpit, the vex, and it's vexing, and it's just a lot of frustration. I want to see the city go for it, and also the citizens do, citizens also. Here's the other one I'd like to express my point on. I live close to Veterans Memorial Parkway, and I've noticed that none of the walks are being shoveled. And I know that there's a lot of people are walking around on the streets. I'd like to see what could the city or whoever sign that department or whatever to be able to shove the walks off so the people can be able not to walk into the streets there, but walk on the sidewalks. I know it's this time that y'all lacking, you have resources, money problems and resources, but that's important, too, because a lot of the citizens in the city, they do a lot of walking to get where they wanted to go to. Other than that, I thank you for letting me speak, and I thank the city council, and it's great to just to be a citizen of Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, your next item of business is remarks of council.
Okay, and remind council members, limited to five minutes. And tonight, we are going to begin with Mayor Protem Amos O'Neal.
Wow, can't remember the last time I started first.
Well, I know.
See if I can take all of my five minutes this time.
Got it.
No, just kidding. Just kidding. Now, again, Happy New Year's to everyone. I'll be very brief. Congratulations to our new chief. He is now the chief of police, and I also want to express appreciation for receiving a great email today about the firefighters' heroic act. Chief Lou, congratulations to your team. The guys do some great work. And I just want to express appreciation for the city staff, the comment the gentleman made. I can echo the sentiments he indicated. I had an encounter just today with one of our city staff, and I think in passing, I made a comment to the city manager about that. I said, "Man, it was very, I didn't accept, I did not expect anything less, but it was just very good to have experienced that myself recently, to know that that's the kind of service that we provide, and the staff really want to do the best job possible." And as the gentleman indicated today, and I think I kind of made a comment last week about it, there are a whole lot of folks in Saginaw, black, white, green, and yellow, who want this city to do well. Okay? So, when we hear some of those comments that we heard, you know, that's a small segment of the city of Saginaw and the county of Saginaw. There are more who believe and want the best than those who want to be critical and sort of on the sideline throwing mud pies at us. With that, looking forward to, I gotta fix my mouth to say this, Ohio State winning tonight. Because I am a gold-blue fan, as you know, but hey, what do you say? But, did I say that? Don't hold that against me, Mr. City Attorney and those Michigan fans. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone. I, too, would like to congratulate our new police chief on his new job. Congratulations. And I, too, want to comment on the situation that occurred with one of our firefighters and how frightening that must have been, and how fortunate we are to have such, you know, well-trained and responsive individuals who are there to help. And thank goodness, things worked out the way that they did. And I'd also send my well wishes to the individual who is recovering. We've got a lot of good news, good things going on in Saginaw. We've got some news about the downtown farmer's market and the purchase of the Saginaw News Building. This is just wonderful. And just a good time to be, I think, part of the city and live here and be part of the council to kind of see these new things happening and be part of making them successful, hopefully. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone. Just kind of piggyback on, well, just recently said it over the break, I was just, I challenged myself to write down what is scheduled to happen in 2015. I mean, from 2015 to 2016, Saginaw's going to look remarkably different. I mean, you got the Riverfront condo development that's going to start in the spring 2015. They plan on having occupancy in fall of 2015. Saginaw Arts Museum and First Mary Bank, the shell, is going to receive $1.7 million to continue to build and renovate. Two historic landmark buildings, C.K. Eddie Mansion and the Hill House, purchased and going to be renovated. They're going to be completion of the Can Council Building. You're going to have Old Town Distillery. As you stated, the farmer's market has a permanent location. Second phase of the CMU Medical School. And Delta College, I believe they're going to make an announcement in 2015. I mean, that's in one year. That's remarkable. I mean, that's just remarkable. I tried to envision what it's going to look like, one year, when I was thinking about this during the Christmas period, and I don't know, I'm astounded. And I just appreciate just the hard work and the teamwork that the city staff has done and all those who have a stake in our city. It's great work. Just a couple of recognition, the Saginaw High Band. I'm just amazed at the level of talent that comes out this city to be recognized nationally. Firefighters, Hossback and McGowan, great work, saved some colleagues. Police Chief Ruth, congratulations. Look forward to your tenure. I'd like to recognize Pam Hugh Smith. She was sworn in as the State Board of Education. We have somebody in the city of Saginaw that's sitting on the State Board of Education. That's inspiring. That's exceptional. I'd like to congratulate Monique Lamar Sylvia for being recognized as a Saginawian of the year. Great work. Mr. Felton, thank you for your personal appearance here and your hands-on approach. I think that means a lot to the city. Thank you for your investment. And that's all I have, man. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Compromise, will you?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to those folks who are here and Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to those folks who are here and the folks who are watching on TV. I too want to congratulate a whole bunch of different organizations and people. I want to thank Saginaw Futures, Tom Miller, for all the great work he does trying to bring businesses and commerce here to Saginaw, Michigan. And it was, it was great hearing about somebody who loves the old buildings and the old Whitney Building that's been there for many, many, many years. Sound like 100 years, right? And that he is going to do something about it. You know, over the holidays, had opportunity to entertain some out-of-town folks at the Bancroft Lounge there. I just really would encourage folks, it's, I mean, it's great. It was a cold winter evening, but it was warm inside and it was, it's a beautiful place and really, really worth your while to stop in there for a drink or coffee or, and just a great place to relax and to converse with your friends and family. I want to encourage you to take part in that. And also, I understand, they told me that it was 60% or 70% occupancy of Bancroft. I think the Eddie Building is almost 100%. If, 70% are they? Okay, alright, alright. It's fantastic. It's, you know, way to go Saginaw. That's awesome. Congratulations to the Saginaw High Band. It's amazing, all the different places they've been. I didn't realize there were all those places. Police Chief Ruth, my congratulations as well, sir. And again, God bless the firefighters for just knowing so much and responding. And I like what he had to say too about there needing to be those AEDs, are they? Is that what we call them? In places of public frequents. I saw that in action at my church just this last, this last year, when someone went down with a heart attack and one of the nurses, a couple of the nurses who attend that church grabbed ahold of the one that we had donated and saved a life. So, it's incredible. Great technology. Farmer's Market, that was really good news to hear and I want to thank Councilman Bench for being the real cheerleader there for the last couple of years for that. Way to go. Hoyt Park, we're bringing back the ice once again this year, starting this coming Saturday. This will be the night skate sponsored by Health Plus, four o'clock from four to seven. So, get out those ice skates and sharpen them up and we'll have, there'll be, the warming house will be open, hot chocolate, cookies, music. If you've been down there already, the ice is in great shape because of this weather and I think we're gonna be really happy about the season down there. I want to, I want to thank the city, Phil Carwatt and his departments for helping us out there, as they always do. And with that, I do want to say, snow shoveling on the sidewalks, it's been difficult everywhere because of the way that the weather happened. You know, with it going so wet and then cold so quickly, got us lots of ice. So, everybody needs to be really careful. I'm sure that what we're doing, in addition to trying to keep the snow off it, we've got to melt it. We've got to melt the ice. So, patience for everybody and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. Second, I do want to, rather than repeat everything said by my fellow council persons previously concerning all the congratulations, I too want to congratulate all those who are congratulated, but especially, I do want to say congratulations to Chief Ruth. It's good to see the promotion from within and it's good to see such a very talented person appointed, so congratulations. And Chief Van Lou, I do apologize for not remembering your firefighter's name, but please extend my best wishes and those of all the council to him. And hope he gets well very quickly. Several things that I want to bring to your attention. First of all, I am happy to remind everyone of the upcoming Symphony, Saginaw Basin for the Orchestra Concert on the 20th, excuse me, the 30th of January at the Saginaw Temple Theater. It will feature Mendelssohn, Ravel and Beethoven, some great pieces. Symphony Number Two by Beethoven. It was interesting that we had the Saginaw Trojan Band, Mighty Marchon Band here because I was hoping they'd stay. I wanted to mention that for those who may want to go on into a professional career with music, the Symphony also sponsors youth programs. Everything from beginning strings to advanced beginning strings, intermediate strings ensemble and the Saginaw Bay Youth Orchestra, which actually conducts concerts. The, they have classes that, actually, the Youth Orchestra's second session for the season just started yesterday, goes through March 8th. And another one will start on March 15th to March 29th, another April 12th to May 3rd. And there, some of the others have other sessions as well. So, if there are those who are interested, that'd be something to look into. It's a great, great program. And there are scholarships for those who are unable to afford it. So, it's a wonderful program if anyone's interested in having their kids advance into music. I do want to follow up also on Councilman Fitzpatrick's comment about the ice being at the park again. I can say how much I appreciate that because I was there Saturday for a softball game, a softball tournament on the ice at Hoyt Park on Saturday. It was a lot of fun and it was sponsored or hosted by the Saginaw Area Fireworks as a fundraiser. Had five teams and it was bitterly cold, but they played and it was wonderful. It was a blast, so. And I want to thank the staff that had the park warming house open for its use and for having the fields, they didn't groom the fields, they just had the home plate and pitcher's mound visible. Other than that, this was being played on snow and ice and it was really fun watching. These people can hit even in the snow, something else. And hopefully, this will be the first of many in the future. So, the park is, we used two, actually used two of the fields, not just one. So, it was great. I also want to mention that the city school district has three First Robotics teams. Some of you might know what that is, but if you don't, it is, First Robotics is a robotics program that was created by Dean Common, an inventor, a number of years ago, and it's internationally now. It has competition every year. The build season for the robotics, for the robot is, starts January 3rd and runs through February 17th. Then, beginning the weekend of February 27th and the 28th, there are competitions, regional, local and then regional throughout the state. Then there's national and international competitions. The next one, or the first one that will be local will be at Midland Dow High School. That'll be hosted by the teams from the Great Lakes Bay region. There are 16 teams in this region. The public is invited at no cost. So, it's a great opportunity to see the high school students at work using the STEM ideas of math, science, engineering, electrical, mechanical, construction, computer programming and teamwork skills. So, if you haven't seen, ever seen it, it's an unbelievable competition. It's a lot of fun. If you want to see a raucous gym when these are going, it's a blast. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the citizens for tuning in to the City Council and see what's going on in their city. I was just thinking a minute ago, I said Saginaw is going about a renaissance. We got three new City Council people here in the last year or so. We got a new city manager, we got a new police chief, we got a new fire chief. I don't know what else we can get new around here. We even got a new fire truck. And Mr. Carwatt got a couple of trucks. I mean, Saginaw is going through some lot of changes. We've got some buildings being built. So, things are happening here in the city of Saginaw. I'm looking forward to what's going on in the next 10 years myself, enjoying it. But, one thing that we got to do is, we need to have, if we could, it'd really be nice to have full employment in the city of Saginaw, where everybody can have some good paying jobs to take care of their families and make it a better place to everybody. Because we can bring new buildings here and all that stuff, but we got some crime. We don't take the one knuckle here to go out there and start some issues in a nice building and all of a sudden, we, Saginaw having another name on the end of it. You know, like something that we don't really want to hear. So, we all need to engage all our citizens and try our best to make everybody do the right thing. You know, that's one reason why I've been in the Big Brother, Big Sister program for the last 20-some years, is to engage these young youth, to get involved in something positive. Out of the six guys that I had, only one of them had a touch with the law. And like I said, that guy, the police sent a helping him buy a car and now he's an employed citizen, he don't have any kids and he's 24-years-old, which is a miracle here in Saginaw. And the other one is, and all of them are doing good, out of the six kids that I had so far. So, it proves a fact that if you engage these kids, they will do good. Association, do bring about assimilation. I'd like to thank too, Mr. Michael Noel for the fine comments. Everybody don't come here and tell us how much they love the city. And the comments that the gentleman made last City Council meeting disturbed me a lot. We don't need people to come here and beat us up. We all got dirty lounges. Everybody know that. You know, but it's always good to find out about some good things that we're doing here in the city of Saginaw too. You know, I'd just like to say that I too would like to wish everybody in the city of Saginaw a Happy New Year. I got a good feeling 2015 is gonna be a beautiful time for the city of Saginaw. It's gonna be a lot of things happening. It's gonna be good for the citizens of Saginaw. I like the STEM cell thing, trying to get kids involved in skilled trades and stuff like that. Next year, study hiring a lot of people out there every day. So, things are looking up. We just need to have some good paying jobs. And I'm looking forward to, you know, like thanking the gentleman coming here and investing in the city of Saginaw. That says a lot, when we got people investing money in the city of Saginaw, so they must like us. And so, we need to be in return and give them some good employees. So, thanks, Mr. Mayor, for letting me make those comments.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the public speakers, Mr. Northwood in his absence. Saginaw is moving up. I don't have a lot of comments for tonight. Congratulations, Chief Ruth. There are a lot of things that are going on in Saginaw, which are good. I've been attending a lot of meetings as relates to some things within the city and I'm excited about some of the stuff that's gonna be prevented, that's gonna be prevailed real soon, or some of the things we like to see happen in the city with the neighborhood grouping. Other than that, Happy New Years to everybody. I hope you had a beautiful holiday and the word for 2015 is conviction, stability and steadfast. And so that if we just convict ourselves steadfast, I think Saginaw would be a much, much better place and I just wish everybody happy holidays.
Councilman Cloris.
Councilman Cloris has no comments this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Well, let's start off with, once again, I'd like to thank the Saginaw High Marching Band, 100 strong. You know, we don't hear enough about the wonderful things the good youth are doing. And you know, Councilman Balls, you're absolutely right. I get one youth that makes a terrible mistake and that's headline news and all the rest. And that's just, that's just Saginaw High. That's not even counting Arthur Hill or that's not counting SASSA and the rest of them. So, I'm just so proud of the young people making a difference. Chief Ruth, who would have ever thought when you in your rookie year, you would be our police chief? But I've watched you develop over the years and certainly understand so forth. And at the same time, Chief, you got to look back at your staff wondering which one of those young people are gonna be moving up. And I charge you, it's your responsibility to get us one in the future and to work on those developments. And that's, that's, that's great. Congratulations. And Chief Van Lou is a perfect another example of in-house, how we are doing so well. Chief, once again, I will echo our thoughts for our firefighter who experienced the heart attack and we always think of our firefighters responding to other people and all of a sudden, we don't realize that they are also, whether they're firefighters or policemen or our city workers, can be victims very closely. And you can bet that Monday night, that will be brought up because once again, Monday night, I am a volunteer instructor with American Red Cross. And Monday night, I'll be teaching CPR, AED and First Aid to professional rescuers and that will be the topic of my class for probably the whole rest of the year. And so, we always like to have a local thing. And I think we have the shock and, is it the hockey game coming up? Or did we have that, the shock and wave? Did that occur already, Chief? Couple, couple weeks ago?
It's coming up, Larry. It's coming in.
Okay, yes. Yeah, okay, Larry. That's coming up then, at the Spirit Game. Is that correct? And that is a promotion to get more of those defibrillators out into our community and I think it's great. I looked around City Hall and I did not see a defibrillator in City Hall, so maybe that's something we'll look at. Once again, I'm having some concerns with TV5. Once again, it's asked the mayor and they call me and say, "Mayor, what would you like to talk about?" Because we have no idea. And it's a blessing that there's nothing controversial going on. Because if it's controversial, I'm telling you, they want to talk about it. But boy, when there's no controversy, well, what would you like to talk about today? And so, that gives me a wonderful opportunity to promote the city of Saginaw and I certainly love that opportunity. Councilman Clock, last year, my grandson and I attended a robotic competition in Midland. I've never, I had no clue what that was, other than they built some kind of little robot thing. And I was so impressed, I didn't realize how many it takes to do that. The school must have a design team. They must have a marketing team. They must have a building team with the people in our community. They must have a cheer group. I mean, there's, I mean, there's people that I don't even, aren't even interested in robotics that are part of that team because they're interested in marketing and they're interested in the other things that go on. They have to raise their own funds. They have an item they market for that. So, it's, boy, if you ever get a chance to go to one of those, please do. I hope all of our members here at Council Table receive the invitation from Arthur Hill High School for the official On the Hill Community Day. That's coming up on February 2nd. I do know that's during, I believe it was, let me double check. That's coming up on February 19th. February 19th, that's coming up, starts at 7:50 in the morning. This is good enough notice, please, if you can work it in your schedules. And I do know that we work, many council members have to work, but if we can work that in your schedule, that's a great time over there at Arthur Hill for that over there. The February one I talked about, oh, we got Hoyt Park coming up. Thank you, Councilman Fitzpatrick, about Hoyt Park. Council members, it's not too late for us to get our entry in for the Second Annual Outhouse Race if council members would like to, and this is not a race to the outhouse, it's a race of the outhouses. So, gosh, many things going on and I can speak for another minute because I'm the only one that has a gavel, but I will not. So, thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
City Manager.
And, City Manager, you have a report for us to make?
Yes, I have a few items. First, a couple of housekeeping, the citywide... First, a couple of housekeeping, the citywide neighborhood meeting, we're starting those again for the new year. The first one is upcoming January 22nd at 5:30. It's again at the Beacon of Hope Church, which is 2109 North Michigan. And it's hosted by Chief Ruth and the Southwest Neighborhood Association. And also, the city is hosting the next ALPAC meeting, so we're going to have it here in council chambers. If you're available and interested, that's going to be on Friday, the 23rd. And you'll be in the afternoon, we can get more information for you, once the agenda comes out and the topics. The strategic planning session, as a few of you mentioned, is on January 24th at the Castle Museum. And we've had a few questions, so I just wanted to, again, state that that is official city council meeting, so it is one of our two required meetings. Our meetings don't have to be at 6:30 on Monday nights, so this meeting can, we can do any business at this meeting that we can do at a regular 6:30 council meeting, which is why it counts as a regular meeting. So far, and again, it will be at 8:30, probably business start at 9 o'clock on the 24th, which is a Saturday, at the Castle Museum. Topics that we have so far, and I think this will pretty much fill up the day for us, a five-year financial forecast has been requested by the Mayor Pro Tem, so we're working on that as a subject. We will be revisiting the street lighting upgrade project that we talked about last year, with some additional information and how we plan to move forward with the project and give a few options to city council to think about for the coming year. We will be, Ms. Yolanda Jones and Tom Miller will be presenting our development strategy, something that we haven't really focused on for a while, but we need to develop that focus. There's hundreds of different philosophies and grants out there, and we want to be able to focus in on a few so that we can focus our development and grants and how we want to use our grants. And Tom mentioned the placemaking, that's something that is pretty prominent in Michigan right now, and I think Saginaw will be a big part of that. So that'll be part of the presentation. The DDA director will be providing an update to council as well. Particularly, what I've asked her to focus on is the goals that the DDA put together as a board, so that the council can be aware of what those goals are and have additional input if there's different things that you would like to see. Councilwoman benches on the DDA now, so you'll have a sitting council member for the first time in quite a while, I think, on the DDA board. So she would be a good one if you have concerns that you want to have brought up at council. And I'm also on the DDA board, so you can always talk to me as well about that. And then finally, what we'll be doing is going through the last strategic plan that we put together with John from SVSU, and kind of updating a couple of items that we've done very well on, and probably some that we need to do some more work on. So I know we were all in each group, so we'll be putting that together between now and that Saturday. A lot of you talked about most of the big new developments, so you took some of that away, but I'm sure we'll talk about that at the strategic planning session too. And the city's going to be supportive of a number of the groups that are doing development. I've already met with SVRC director on their project. And obviously, any project where they're going to be applying for grants or foundation money, having the support of the city is critical. So we'll be a partner with any of the groups that are doing development, SVRC with that project, Delta College. And I'll say, aside from those more public institutions doing development, the other groups are taking a really broad focus on their projects and getting a lot of collaborative efforts involved. Shaheen's condo project in Old Town, I know they're meeting with the businesses in Old Town to make sure how they can fit in and see, get input from those groups. So that's really good to see, and those are all projects we support. And Mr. Felton's Distillery, Jake's condo projects, Bradley's Bistro, a number of those things that the city's had a lot of involvement in, that I think we can even do more with our SCDC and the DDA. So we're going to be looking at all that, and we can talk about that at the council, the strategic planning session with council. And I think what we, in our draft of the agenda, we have about an hour in there for council discussion. So if there's different things that you want to talk about or get more information on, how we can do that at that planning session as well. And Councilman Balls mentioned that we do have a lot of new department heads, new fire chief, new police chief. And one of the things with a lot of our newer people that I've noticed is that, and I think it's a great trait and great quality to have a lot of our people put the organization first, and they don't want a lot of big ceremonies and things like that. And we've had that with a few. But I do want to, I do want to say a few things about Chief Ruth and have him step up to the podium if he'd like to make a few comments. And I know you all know Chief Ruth because he's been around the city for 20 years, and started as a patrol officer in 1994 and spent, I'd say, the majority of his years in the police department, in the detective bureau. 12 years is a long time to be in the detective bureau. And he could probably speak more to that if you want to talk to him personally, but I've been around other police agencies. And normally, people rotate through those positions just because it's, you see a lot of things in those positions, and it's not something that people want to stay in for a long period of time. But Bob's been very dedicated to the city, and I know he has had a great relationship with the prosecutor's office, talked to the sheriff's office. He has established a very good relationship with the sheriff's office, and the sheriff and his personnel as well, since the time he was in interim here. He has a great relationship with the state police. Lieutenant Simon is here tonight, I noticed, and he served on our interview committee. So I thank him again for that and all the people who served on that committee. Bob was promoted to sergeant in 2008 and went back to the road at that time, and in 2013 was promoted to lieutenant and watch commander. Chief Ruth was, grew up in the city of Saginaw, and he was raised in the city, and he attended Central Michigan University. And he brings a business focus to the police department, which I think is very important. One of the most important things for us right now is management and development of the budget. And I can tell you that Chief Ruth, as the acting police chief, has found ways to make purchases that maybe in the past the police department hasn't thought of. So he's been pretty, pretty active in managing the grants and utilizing those funds to do different things, which I think is very positive to see as well. One thing that he's also done is made himself available to the neighborhood groups. I don't know all of them that he's attended, but any of the neighborhood groups that's asked him to attend their specific meetings, he's done so since October. So that was very impressive as well. So I think that Chief Ruth will continue to do a great job, and he's got a lot of ideas. And I think now that he is the permanent chief, I think you'll see some additional changes in the police department. Bob, did you want to say a few words?
I'd like to say thank you for all the kind words, especially from the council members. Mayor Browning, who we used to work together when I first started at the department, one of my mentors years ago. We won't say how long, though, we'll keep quiet on that. I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you for all of the citizens that participated in the interview panels, all of the community leaders that participated, as well as the department heads within the city that participated in the interview process. I greatly thank them. And I also thank Mr. Morales for having the, for choosing me as the chief, for having the confidence in me that I can lead the department into the future. And we had a really good year last year, very good from a crime standpoint, and we're going to have another good year this year. And the reason we're going to do that is because we have a partnership. And our partnership at this point in time is with the Michigan State Police. It's one of the greatest partnerships that I've seen in all my years of working here at the police department. We've never got along as good as we do with the Michigan State Police, the Sheriff's Department, the Michigan Department of Corrections. We all work together as a team. If you would come down to the police department sometime, you will see in the detective bureau, and you'll see it on the street, you'll have Saginaw police detectives working hand-in-hand with Michigan State Police detectives. It's almost unheard of. Years past, they'd never do that. Just never get along, never cooperate. The relationship that we have spawned is going to continue into the future, and that is why crime is going to reduce in the city of Saginaw. It's because of the relationship we have with the Michigan State Police. And all I can see is good things coming into the future. Thank you, everybody. Does anybody have any questions? Thanks.
Council members, any questions for the chief? No? Councilman Balls, go ahead.
I mean, we've got some questions, but we're going to save them until after the national football game is over with tonight.
We can talk about those for a while, if you'd like to. We're in no hurry.
No, 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 no. We'll get with you later.
Okay.
Councilman Fitzpatrick, go ahead.
I was just wondering if we could all shake your hand?
Well, I guess we probably could.
That's right.
And I think, I think it is good, as the mayor mentioned, that Chief Ruth did come up through the ranks, as did Chief Van Lu, and also has our public services director, Phil Carwatt, our wastewater and water treatment plant supervisor, Kim Mason. And I think that's all of our department heads that have, but Jeff Klopsak actually started the department in the city GIS, so he's been, I guess that's coming up through the ranks if they, you started the department. So I think that's, I think the dedication that the staff has is really noticeable, and we have a lot of experience. We might have some new department heads, but there's a lot of years in the city out there. And also Saginaw Future, Tom has been with Saginaw Future for a number of years, and he really grew up around the city as well, since his dad was working here in development for so long. I think he's probably heard about the city for a long time, and he's, the one thing I'll say, when you get a lot of people like that who've come up through the city, they'll do almost anything and go above and beyond to do things for the city. We have a great staff, so I'm grateful for that, and I think Bob's going to do a great job and keep up with that line. And we are, you saw the new police officers at the last meeting that we had, we had three brand-new, that, two of them that the city sponsored through the academy, and a third one that was a certified officer. And we are also hiring a new firefighter, which maybe we'll be able to do the same thing at the, maybe in the February meeting, and swear that new firefighter in. But I think we will be doing hiring in the near future, so I wanted to have Dennis Jordan, who is our human resources director that you all know. They have put together kind of a recruiting package, and we do want to improve the opportunities within all of our departments. So the city council is a great resource to get that word out in the community. If you know people who are young and looking for jobs in public safety, and are, especially if they're from the city, I think it's a great opportunity, and Dennis will just speak for a few minutes about what we're planning with that.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council. Yes, three minutes, that's all I have, so I got the word. In front of you, you'll have, there's a packet, it's, you see a job Saginaw. We've kind of put something together. It has been over two years since we have done major recruiting for public safety officers, both fire and police. So we're excited, we're, we have an opportunity, we feel that there's going to be some openings in the near future. Not like we have had over the last couple of years, where we've downsized the police department from 106 when I got here, down to 55. And the fire department from 87, again, six years ago, we're down to 50. So I believe that we're kind of on the, as things are growing, and now we're in an opportunity, hopefully, with a budget that we'll be able to at least maintain, and through attrition, people leaving, hopefully, we'll be able to replace those. So what we're doing is putting together another recruiting program. This one, we're expanding it quite a bit more than what we normally have done. And as the clerk had mentioned, we're even including a career fair this month. So what I'd like to do is just run through this really quick, so that you, as council, have an idea of what we're doing and how this process is going to work. You'll notice the first page is the posting that is up already on our website, on our bulletin boards, and we've all also distributed to different advertising mediums, and I'll share that with you in just a second as well. As far as the police officers go, we're looking at certified, we have a posting for certified. Those are current police officers out there that are ready, already working for another agency or recently, maybe have left an agency that are certified and ready to start working with us right away. So we've got a list going for those. Those that are certifiable, and those are officers that have gone through the academy, have been MCOL certified, but they haven't worked for anyone yet. So there's some of those police officers that maybe have, they're not police officers yet, but some of those cadets have completed the academy, and they're out there. And then the third type of candidate that we're looking for are non-certified. Non-certified would be someone that we would hire off the street, so to speak, someone that was looking for a career, not just a job, but a career in law enforcement. And those folks, what we're going to do with those, as we try to recruit them, after they have to complete a MCOL certification, and then if we did interview them and hire them, we would then ultimately pay, actually pay for them to go through the academy. So as you're taking a look at this job posting, the, we have different deadlines, the certified and certifiable. The deadline for those to have their applications in is the end of February. Non-certified, we're going to expand it up through almost the end of April. So we want to leave a long window to see how many of those young youths or youths that we might be able to recruit in the general area in our community. And that's where we're going to be asking business leaders, our faith-based leaders, city council leaders, anyone, to help us recruit some youth into that category. On the back of the first page, what you'll notice is those are, if, this is kind of the questions that people are going to ask for those certified, those non-certified candidates. You can take a look at that page, I won't go through that, but that's the process they're going to have to go through. They're going to have to complete a reading and writing test through MCOLs, they're going to have to apply through that program. I think it's $45. And then they're going to have to complete a reading and written test, a physical test, and they have to, they're going to have to end up scoring, there's three different bands, A, B, and C, and they'll have to score at least an A or a B band in order to qualify to be a candidate for us. And all that information is out on the MCOL's website. What you'll see is a lot of different testing dates, so through this period of time, the testing for both the physical and the writing, though, what you, I have there a list of Delta, Kirtland, Lansing, those are just a few of the colleges, there's more MCOL certified locations out there in the state of Michigan, but these were the more local ones. And these actually had the dates that would fall in that window, that they would be able to complete that, have that ready before April 24th, I believe was the deadline for that group. So, so that's, that's what we're looking for, again, that's posted out there. I have a list of frequently asked questions on the next page, and you can see what the starting wages are for a police officer, $39,000. And after, after four years, they would be up to about $51,000. And that's probably all I really have to say on that. If you have questions as I go along, just don't, don't be afraid to ask me. The next job posting is for the firefighters, pretty much the same, they don't have to go through the, obviously, the police academy. But what we'd be looking for is candidates meeting the requirements that's on this list, and we have a window open through March 13 for that list. One of the things that we're doing that's, that's a little different from a lot of other communities, I've mentioned it, number one, we will help pay for their, the police academy. A lot of these other cities and locations, they are not they are not providing that. That's something that we have been doing for, like, two of those cadet -- or two of those new officers, we paid for their academy. And the way we did it is we reduced their starting wage to offset that cost. So after six months, they'll be back up to full pay, but during the time they're at the academy, they're receiving $9.75 an hour. So that's how we're doing that. The second, as far as the firefighters go, what we're doing is we're providing our own firefighter training to be a firefighter one. We're providing that training ourselves right at the fire station. So we've started to do that. We have our own fire academy, so to speak. So we'll be able to do our own. Plus, if anyone outside in the townships or something are looking to be trained, we can do that. Prior to this, we were sending them out to other locations to do that and paying for it.
How many are we looking to get into this academy, this firefighting training?
Well, we wouldn't -- what we're doing basically is putting together, what we'll do for both police and fire, we'll put together a list. We'll do all the prequalifications, get them qualified, and we're putting together a list. And then as openings occur, that's when we will select a candidate and actually put them in. At that point in time, we're basically going to hire them off that list. So that -- we're just putting together a list right now for openings. We're going to have a firefighter opening right now. We already do. So unfortunately, it's going to take a little longer to get that recruiting process in place, but we'll have some. So that's kind of how it works. I mean, we may end up with, we may end up with 70 people on each one of those lists, but that's kind of how we'll do it. We'll leave the list open as long as we feel it's appropriate. Could be a year, could be two years, as long as they're still certifiable, and then we can put them through the academy. So that's the edge that I feel that we have, the city has, is we're going to actually provide the academy, the firefighter training, certification academy, and then the police academy. Of course, they have to, they have to complete that and pass the academy at Delta College. The other thing what we're doing is, if you'll notice one of the other posters, is we're going to have a job fair right here on January 29. And we're being, we're trying to be very inclusive with that. We not only have for police officers and firefighters, but we're going to consider, like, a police interns and fire interns and candidates that would possibly qualify when we get the cadet program going, police reserve officers that we're always looking for, parking enforcement, environmental code enforcement. For someone may not want the career as a police officer or a firefighter, those are other options that they could look at that we may have in the city of Saginaw. So we're trying to be very inclusive and expand it as much as we can along those lines. It's very competitive out there from a police standpoint. Just to kind of give you an idea, Beth Church is doing most of the legwork behind all of this. God bless her soul, because she has done a lot of work putting all this together. But one of the things that we identified is, you can go all to the website, we have Saginaw Township, Taylor, Wayne, Grand Rapids, Mount Pleasant, Lansing, Jackson, Auburn Hills, Muskegon Heights, St. Clair Shores, Baton Harbor, just to list a few of the cities that are recruiting for police officers. The state police, the sheriff departments. I mean, there are a lot, we have a lot of competition out there of other agencies that are looking, and some of them do pay better. Some of them, Saginaw Township, it was in the paper, they're paying their officers $41,000 starting out, and we're at 39. So there's a couple thousand dollars difference, but we'll provide that training. That's the edge that we hope that we were able to get them. But again, in four years, they're up to $51,000. I'm not sure what the top end for the, like, the township is. But those are some of the opportunities, or some of the challenges that we're going to have out there. You'll also notice in your packet the different recruitment resources. Not only have we sent this out to a group, but we've put together specific personal letters to the faith-based group, 33 different mailings to different pastors and churches and reverends throughout this Saginaw area. We've contacted retirees, minority retirees, and tried to see if we can't get some interest through that avenue. We've identified the business community. I mean, you take a look at the list. It's not ending. Of course, we have city council. The NAACP has been notified. Anyone that can help bring in candidates to this job fair, that's what we're looking for. Or just coming in and applying in-house here in Human Resources, or we have, you can do that online. And just to kind of finish up, you know, something that I was really excited, I know all of you were, and I hope we can do this in the future, swear our firefighters and our police officers, and at these council meetings, it takes a little bit of time, but you get an opportunity to see that process. Those three officers that we hired, they were actually recruited in 2013. They got on the hiring list in 2013. We have not had the opportunity to bring them on until now. So it takes a long time. We get these lists, we get these folks on here to actually get them in uniform. So, you know, I just hope you appreciate that. That wasn't something that just happened, you know, last month. That's something that's been going on for a long time that we've been working on, on trying to recruit good, qualified candidates. So, yes.
Yes. I was talking to a police officer from our area, not from the city of Saginaw, but he mentioned that Sterling Heights was hiring 60 right now, for hiring, in the process of hiring 62 officers. And I know the Michigan State Police is also in a big hiring mode.
Hopefully, they've slowed down, but yes.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, I'm just wondering, is that pool, the same pool that they're drawing from, are we also drawing from that?
We potentially could be competing against that group.
I see.
So what we're hoping to do is get local applicants that want to stay in the area and be part of the community. You know, we're going to put it out there in the state if someone wants to relocate. Maybe there's somebody living in Grand Rapids who wants to relocate back to Saginaw. So, you know, we've expanded it, you know, throughout the state, but yeah, that's the competition out there. And I don't know if there's turnover, budgets. I mean, on some of these larger cities with a lot of extra money, and I shouldn't say extra money, but a lot of money and resources are able to do that. But 60 officers sounds like a lot, but I, they could be, maybe it's over a couple of years.
Maybe they're just thinking in terms of the years, the next few years or something.
Right.
But I was just wondering if, do we go outside the state of Michigan to recruit, or can we? Is that?
You could, but we're trying to recruit right here.
No, no, I know. I just wondered if we've got.
I mean, if someone came in and applied, it's out on our website. Somebody from out of state could come and apply.
Well, I was thinking in terms of the minority issue, you know, if we've got to go that far afield.
I hope they're right here. I think that they are.
I hope they're right here, too.
And I think that they are, and I think we just need to encourage them. It's a career, and that's a big thing. I think I have to, I can't over, I can't emphasize enough, these folks that get into it, it's not just a job. It's got to be, you're talking a 20, 25, 30-year career. We're going to get you in. We're going to train you. It's a career. And hopefully we can encourage folks that this is something they can do for the rest of their life, the rest of their working career. Yes.
I think the other one that's really recruiting heavily right now is the Department of Corrections. Michigan State Department of Corrections is, and competitively, they so much more financially. So I see that. Councilman Tibbs, did you have a question?
Oh, yes.
Comment? Yes.
I see you have National Minority Update website for 30-day online, and that appears to be a national effort to recruit.
It is. I mean, we're putting it on, you know, targeting certain websites and for the diversity, you know, and I don't know where that's going to go, but it isn't like we're focusing on that.
I was going to say, I guess I just appreciate that it appears that the city staff took some suggestions that were provided or given to you last year sometime, and it appears that you applied that. I mean, there's several community-based publications here. You're touching base with some retired women and retired minority police officers and firefighters. Those were all suggested. I was wondering if, I see you have community leaders here. I was wondering if that include principals maybe at the high or the hill. I mean, are we getting the, our liaison committee involved? It seemed like it'd be a good effort to get our high schools involved in this type of event. I don't know if there was any effort. Would that be considered a community leader?
We've had some discussion on that. Actually, a week ago, we talked with both chiefs, and the firefighters coming out of high school, probably starting a career there, is probably more possible, a fit that could take place. Police officers usually, we're looking for, you know, we're not requiring an associate's degree, but we're looking for, how do I want to say this? Before I put a badge and a gun in someone's hand, I hope they have some good life experience, a little bit of experience, maturity. So I don't know if walking out of high school is the best time for that particular candidate, but from a firefighter's standpoint, that usually is a good fit.
I was looking at the police intern and possibly fire intern.
Right, exactly.
Sure.
Yeah. I'll make sure that we, we talked about it. I don't remember where we left off, but.
Also, have the schools have an opportunity to be involved in other programs? Their Centric Grant that they're having will have a public safety component, and both of our chiefs and other firefighters and police officers will be working with that. So that will help get youth in the Saginaw schools interested in it. And then once we, that'll be kind of a launching pad for our Explorer Program in the police department, and also the, I think what we call it for the fire department, but it's similar to an Explorer Program, but it's more like a mini academy for high school kids. So I think that's where we can get in with the schools. And when we do talk about it, I think two meetings ago with our city school liaison, we talked about a lot of opportunities in the city, even in Mr. Carwatt's department. So the schools are aware of different things that we have in the city available for hiring, and we hope that the people on that committee will put that back through the school system. Thank you. I appreciate it. Pretty comprehensive.
Actually, I want to follow up on you, Councilman Tibbs.
Saginaw Career Complex, again, it has a law enforcement program, and it's a very good program. And in fact, they have students who attend the state police academy. I know at least two who did this summer. So if we have the ability to connect with them for our youth program, the internship or whatever we're developing, we need to be there with those instructors who are, who have that class. We should be there because they, the instructor there is a very strong supporter of law enforcement. And if I told you his name, you'd know who he was.
We've, we've.
So I want to go one step further, and that is Delta. I'm assuming we're getting word to Delta as well, because they have a law enforcement program as well.
If you put down the list, I'm going to be happy to probably bring them back up.
But both of those are on the list of contacts that the.
I did not, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see the Saginaw, oh, last one. I apologize. It is. But you really need to be right in touch with the instructor possibly.
Right. We're working with Delta, it's a cat, police, criminal justice academy, police academy. I mean, that's, in fact, that's where we work with Galvin Smith over there, who's responsible for that.
I knew that, but I wanted to touch base and mention it as well.
In fact, the fire department has an intern from Delta right now working with them. So we're definitely working with the universities, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members, if you have any additional from this list on here, please don't hesitate to get ahold of the manager and pass that on through the manager to Dennis. Any additional on that list there, please. We're not limited to that. That's just the start. So think of any additional. Please get with the manager so he can pass that on to them.
Be going to church or veterans groups or different things like that. If you need copies, just stop in, and Dennis's office can give you copies of the job postings and copies of the document for the career fair as well. So you can hand that out at different events that you go to. And that concludes the management update.
Okay, thank you.
Your next order of business is the consent agenda.
And the agenda's been available on City, at City Hall, on the city's website, and SGTV Channel 191. Council members, need a motion to adopt consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions.
It's been moved and supported.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, your next order of business is the reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
It appears that we do not have any appointments today. Is there any reports from any boards or commissions by any of the council members, councilwoman, any bench?
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that the Boards and Commissions Committee meeting has been rescheduled for January 20, which is Tuesday, in Conference Room 104 for 10:30 a.m.
10:30, thank you. Any others? Councilman Tibbs.
As far as the Lisa Diddam Committee, I have been receiving some emails and a few calls about that. And where we are with that, I received a draft from the city attorney. I'm reviewing it. And then after it's been reviewed, we'll have another subcommittee meeting and see if they can leave the committee so it can come before council.
Councilman Tibbs, you're reviewing that first before it goes to the committee to review?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And get with them. Okay, that sounds great. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Ball.
I'll read the text at 10:30 a.m. It'll be in Conference Room 104 outside the court office.
Thank you. Any other?
The 20th.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the 20th.
It's all right, yes.
All right. Any other committee reports? Being none, moving on.
Thank you, Mayor. Next is the resolutions. We do have one this evening. It's establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district located at 124 South Michigan Avenue.
Council members, I need a motion to adopt.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Next is motions and a [inaudible].
Is there any motions or miscellaneous business to come before the council? Being none, will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely. It'll move.
Been moved and supported. All, any discussion on it? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed?
We're adjourned.